In absence of a gavel, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on April 16th, 2020 at 4:04 PM. Due to health and safety concerns related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, this meeting is being conducted by video conference or telephone call. At least a quorum of the board will be participating by video conference or telephone conference in accordance with the provisions of Sections 551.125 or 551.127 of the Texas Government Code that have been suspended by order of the governor. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. The Board of Trustees is on this date beginning at 4:05 PM. We'll convene in closed session pursuant to Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act for the topics stated as such on our agenda. We will reconvene in open meeting at approximately 5:00 PM. Thank you. For everyone's face that I can see, would y'all give me a thumbs up if you can hear me? Thank you. Then we are ready again. Thank you all for joining us tonight at this time. I will reconvene in open session. The meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees on April 16th at 5:17 PM. Thank you all for joining us in this electronic format. And as always, please be patient if we have any hiccups or glitches on anything that happens as, like many things, our district's chasing right now and working through lots of new ways of operating procedures for us. We will start our meeting with opening ceremony. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A little delay can always make the pledge a little bit tougher every time you say it. So, thank you all. I would ask everyone, as someone who had a daughter walk in during our last meeting, please make sure everything, you're muted until you're ready to speak, until you're ready to talk and everything, other devices are plugged in. I did just have a cellphone dial on me a few minutes before this call, so check your phone messages or your laptops and if need be, plug them in by all means. At this time, if you would, please join me in a moment of silence and please consider all those, especially on the front lines that are working to fight this COVID-19, our healthcare workers and our staff and everyone that is working diligently every single day for this across the country. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, first on our agenda, as we'll go through agenda tonight, first we have our open forum for agenda items. As stated on the post-aid agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding item of the agenda are required to register by sending an email to the superintendent of schools, Ms. Lisa Benjamin, no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered, address the board on agenda items tonight?
No, sir, we do not have any registered requesters.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. Next up, we're going to move into our action items. The first action item, we have a considered sale of real property of the scribe. Is this Dr. Kavasos? I think we go to you first on this one, or?
Sure. Thank you, President. Thank you, Vice President Hogg. And we bring this item as a consideration for the board for the sale of this property.
Board, we have an item up for sale of property that we've all received. Is there a motion for action?
I move that we accept.
I second. I have a motion by Ms. Fowler and a second by Mr. Will Banks. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote by raising your right hand at this moment if you are for. Six trustees present, six trustees vote in the affirmative. Motion passes. Next, we'll move to action item B. Consider resolution authorizing the superintendent to seek waivers due to COVID-19. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. And so this item is a resolution to allow the district to apply for waivers as appropriate during this closure. There are some waivers that come to mind and that are already available, but there are also other waivers that the commissioner will make available during this time. So even as most recent, at some of our calls with the commissioner, he says things like, that needs to probably be a waiver and we'll have a process for districts to have a waiver on that. So there's a lot of those different items. This resolution allows the district to apply for them and to be efficient in that application. One of them has to do with appraisals and yearly appraisals and things like that that we will be applying for a waiver for that as well. But this gives that authorization for your consideration.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Kavasos. And I think we have a resolution to be read. Ms. Fowler, if I'm correct, you'll be reading that?
Yes, thank you, Vice President Hogg. Whereas the US government has declared a national emergency and the state of Texas has declared a statewide disaster regarding the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas on March 19th, 2020, the Texas governor issued the executive order number GA-08 relating to COVID-19 preparedness and mitigation. And through this action and in accordance with guidelines from the president, ordered the temporary closure of all Texas school districts. Whereas Texas Education Code 11.151 gives the Board of Trustees the exclusive power and duty to govern and oversee the management of the public schools of the district. Whereas Texas Education Code 7.056 permits a district to apply to the Commissioner of Education for a waiver of a requirement, restriction, or prohibition imposed by the Education Code or rule of the State Board of Education or Commissioner. Whereas TEA has indicated that it will accept a waiver request made pursuant to Texas Education Code 7.056 by a superintendent if the Board of Trustees has delegated general operational authority or waiver-specific authority to the superintendent. Whereas TEA recommends that if the board delegates, delegates authority to the superintendent to request waivers from the commissioner, that the board ratify the waiver request at a future board meeting to ensure compliance with Texas Education Code Chapter 11 and Section 7.056. Whereas the board finds there is a need for the district to maintain efficient, effective, and consistent district operations during the period of the disaster declaration under these circumstances, which may include the need to request available waivers under state and federal law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Arlington Independent School District makes the following delegation to the superintendent. The authority to pursue any necessary and available waivers from TEA without further action of the board and the authority to pursue any waiver with respect to professional employee evaluations to extend the superintendent deems them necessary. And in the event other waivers are needed, the superintendent is authorized to submit other waiver requests in accordance with guidance from national, state, or local authorities or agency.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Fowler. And Ms. Fowler, is that a resolution in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir, I make the motion that the board delegate the authority to Superintendent Kavasos to apply for any waivers that we might need.
In the form of that resolution, correct?
Yes, in the form of that resolution.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. I have a motion by Ms. Fowler and a second by Ms. Walton. Let me ask, are there any questions? Dr. Kavasos, let me ask one question on this. And I know you'll send, we'll have to go through and ratify on that. On any of these waivers, I would ask that you would send a communication to us of anything that you're applying for that would need that notification. And at least, even if it's a last minute, as normal, please, I would say run that through our board president at first to make sure we're, she's at least notified on the front side and then it's sent to all seven of us so that we know what is going through on any waiver request. You know, the governor has given us a lot of authority to do virtual meetings in a short period of time. So waivers always make me, you know, too much delegation is not a bad thing, but can be a bad thing. But I think we've got trust in you of where it's going. So I would ask just still for notifications for things to be brought forward. Anything that you are going for that would enact this waiver that you're asking for.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. At this time, I have a motion by Ms. Fowler and a second by Ms. Walton. Any further discussion? If not, if you're voting in favor of the waiver, please raise your right hand at this time and make sure it's on camera. I see six trustees voting the affirmative. Trust the waiver resolution passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Fowler, for that long read on a resolution. Can sometimes become tedious to read. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda item. I think we're, Ms. Powell? There she is. Good afternoon, Ms. Powell.
Good afternoon. So, Vice President Hogg, board members, Dr. Kavasos, good evening. We have three bids on the agenda for your consideration this evening. In all three cases, the administration is recommending the lowest bids and the bids that represent the best value to the district.
Thank you, Ms. Powell, and thank you for all, while we're here, thank you for all the financial work you're doing during this. I know it's lots of extra pieces. And I know you and Ms. Moss are working diligently on multiple things as well as your staff. Is, at this moment, is there a motion? Is there a motion to, let me ask, are there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda first by my colleagues? Perfect. At this time, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll take that from Mr. Chapa as a motion. And Ms. Fowler, was that a second from you?
Yes, I'll second.
Perfect. I have a motion by Mr. Chapa to accept the consent agenda and a second by Ms. Fowler. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, please raise your hand, make sure it's in the camera so we can all see you're voting yes. I have six trustees voting the affirmative. The motion passes. Let me ask, Ms. Benjamin, I know, and I know sometimes we do roll calls. Do you want me to do a roll call vote on this or will that hand vote qualify?
The hand quote qualifies plus you stated that you could see all six hands.
Perfect. Even easier. Look at that efficiency. Next, we'll move to our discussion item tonight. Update on the 2014 and 2019 bond programs. Dr. Kavasos, I'm thinking of throwing this to you first.
Yes. Thank you, Vice President Hogg. And so tonight, this item is an update of our 14 and 19 bond program. So just a slight transition in the focus of our very important work today on a day-to-day basis with this closure. We do want to take this time to bring maybe an item like this one into a little bit more normalcy as we start looking into the future. And so tonight you'll hear about our programming at the Fine Arts Center, our programming at the Nattatorium, the type of classes we're going to offer there, where we are with certain projects, the consolidation opportunity for administration and different annexes. And so as a district, we still work very diligently to be efficient. There's opportunities to consolidate the central office into the enterprise building, for example, and create efficiencies and service to our campuses. So this is really one of those opportunities in this item to start looking into the future a little bit. And when we reopen and things get back to quote-unquote "normal" and some opportunities. So you thought it would be appropriate to bring this because there's still a lot of bond work going on right now with design work and the such. So this gives us a chance to kind of look forward a little bit and not so much on the day-to-day necessarily, as that's important and we do it every day. But this gives us a chance to look a little forward. So I'm going to turn it over, Ms. Powell. We do have other people, Vice President Hogg, on this call that will allow them to present. Eric White, Dr. Anderson from Fine Arts, et cetera. So at this time, Ms. Powell.
Perfect. And Ms. Powell, before you start, let me make sure everyone on this can see the screen share at this moment. Speak now if whoever holds your piece, if you can't see it.
I can see it.
Ms. Powell, go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you, Vice President Hogg, board members, Dr. Kavasos. Good evening. As Dr. Kavasos mentioned, we have been attempting to continue the work with the bond program throughout the closure. And I very much appreciate the plant services staff, all the principals who have been involved in the planning work. We've had teachers engaged in some focus group meetings that you'll hear about momentarily, and our architects. So we've had a number of people that have been engaged in this work and we're very pleased to get to bring that tonight to you. So as everyone knows, we passed our bond election in November, a total of $966 million. And we've actually sold already the first series of those bonds. The board will recall that in February, you approved a bond sale in the amount of $311 million of new money from this authorization. So those bonds were closed in March. We received the funds and we've been moving forward with the work. The board has actually already approved some bids from which we will buy things for the bond program in our last meeting and then also even this evening on the consent agenda. There were several items that give us procurement authority to begin buying equipment, band uniforms, et cetera. So I'm going to go through the facilities piece first on the 2019 bond program. And then following that, hang on, I think. Lisa just sent me a note about the display, so let me.
I was just trying to text you about that.
Yeah, so do you see just the playing screen at the moment?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so.
Well, I don't see the PowerPoint.
Hold on, Ms. Powell, I don't see the PowerPoint now. It was up there and now it's gone.
All right. It's interesting. Let's try resharing that. I may not be able to put it in presentation mode here.
You just have to share a different Windows screen.
All right. When I put it in presentation mode, you see it shows the notes. So I'm going to leave it like this for the moment.
Perfect. We can see this, Ms. Powell. Thank you.
All right. All right, so we're going to talk first about 2019. When we finish with the 2019 update, we will give you an update on the Fine Arts Center and the Athletics Complex. And at that point, Eric White from Athletics and Christopher Anderson from Fine Arts are going to give an update on the programming work that they've been doing around those two facilities. So you will recall in December, we brought to the board a bond implementation plan. And we showed this same slide that showed that we had phased out all of the projects over the five-year bond program into five different phases. We're working now on phase one. And you'll see that that yellow color you'll see represented on several other slides in just a moment, just to kind of give you some context. That work has begun and will continue through the third quarter of 2023. This is a list of the projects included in phase one. Phase one includes the renovation and addition for the Gunn Junior High School Fine Arts and Dual Language Academy. An addition at Crow to support the East Arlington Master Plan. We'll talk about that in just a minute. Three replacement elementary schools that are all part of what we consider the East Arlington Master Plan. And then we have renovation work, condition improvements at Jackupford Junior High and Jones, Fine Arts Dual Language Academy. Also renovation work at Martin and creating a district-wide competition athletic field at Martin High School. We also have the first phase of our playgrounds. That's, we've divided that work into three phases. We'll talk more about that in just a minute. So phase one includes approximately 18 of our schools. We also have improvements and an addition at the Food Service Center, a freezer addition, the Enterprise Center, the administration building, land acquisition, and then creating the pre-K classroom standard for the entire district, for pre-K furnishings. This status report shows you where we are on those different projects. There are 13 underway. One of them is actually under construction already. We're doing site work at Gunn Junior High. Two projects, the Crow Edition and the Food Services Edition, are in the bid stage and we will be bringing those to the board for consideration next month. And then the remaining 10 projects are in design work. And some of that design work is quite far along and others are just beginning. On February 27th, we had an event to help promote some of our construction projects and encourage subcontractors to connect with different general contractors. We hosted an event at the PDC, it was called a matching event. And general contractors could sign up. They didn't necessarily have to be connected with us in any way. They did not have to have already done work for us. But any general contractor could come and set up a booth. And then we invited subcontractors to come. Akari helped us with outreach to promote the program. Ari is our hub consulting firm. We had approximately 220, I think, subcontractors that attended this event. It was very well received. And we had a number of general contractors represented there, approximately 21. And there were even three different advocacy firms, firms that helped promote outreach to subcontractors into minority women-owned businesses and hub subcontractors that also had a presence here. So very well attended and we think that that serves us well for projects that we will bid down the road. This is a picture of the Gunn Junior High site work that has begun recently. There was an item on the agenda this evening to approve the GMP for the actual construction work. And so that work will get underway very, very shortly. In regards to the East Arlington Master Plan, you've seen this slide before. It shows all the different projects that are part of that East Arlington Master Plan. Included in that, the lines that have the yellow bars on them, those are all phase one projects. So those projects have all begun and are in different states. Most of them are in the design phase right now. Crow Elementary is one of those that is in the bid phase, actually. Crow will get a small classroom addition and renovation work. And that is one that we will be bringing to the board next month for consideration. The web project, we'll talk more about in just a minute. It's under, or in the design phase along with Berry and Thornton. Berry and Thornton were just barely beginning design work on that. The web process has moved along. We've had several charrette meetings around that. So. So web, a little detail about that. The architect firm is BRW. They've hosted three different charrette meetings. The first one was with district administration, program staff, instructional folks, and senior administration along with the web campus administration. They hosted a second meeting at the school for faculty and for support staff at web. And then a third event in which they invited parents and students to participate. And the pictures you see here are from that last event, the one where parents and students attended. And a charrette is a process through which architects gain input on priorities, on needs of stakeholders, the users of a space. And so they've taken information and input from these different groups and they'll now piece this together and that will help inform their work as they begin the initial design on web, the new web elementary. So we will be bringing that schematic design back to the board in the very near future. They are working, the architects are working on that now. Another project we'll talk about are playgrounds. There again, we've had a committee of folks that have been working on this. And I'll remind all of us that as part of the 2019 bond package, we will be putting a new playground, or two new playgrounds actually, at every elementary school. There will be two different playground units at every elementary school. One for older kids, grades four through six, and then a separate playground for kids pre-K through third grade. All of the new playgrounds will be ADA accessible. They'll have a surface like the one represented in the picture here. They will all have a shade structure. The actual play units will be different than what you see represented here. But this is about the closest we have to the standard that we are trying to create at the moment, and that's at Adams. Even Adams will get the new equipment. All of the new equipment will be ADA accessible. So we've had a committee of about 20 people that have been working on this process. It's one that everyone has honestly had a lot of fun with. There have been PE teachers from the elementary grades, a couple of elementary school principals, special ed staff members, a parent, and then also plant services staff. And central administration has had a representation here along with the athletics departments. Had our assistant athletics director, Ken Peach, who is responsible for PE, has had a seat on that committee. And just like we did with web, this committee has met three times and we provided input to the engineer to come up with the elements that everyone thought were appropriate and prioritized for this particular project. We met twice and then created boards like you see in the lower right-hand corner. And those boards then were taken out to the schools and we let kids have input on the different elements that had been selected and for consideration. And the kids gave their feedback. They basically voted on what they thought they wanted most on their playground. We took them to several different elementary schools and to schools that had large populations of special needs kids. And so everyone had a hand in this. We compiled the results from that, their input, shared it back with the entire committee and came to a consensus on the particular elements that we thought were most desired to have on these two different playground structures. So the engineer is currently drawing out the layout, the standard layout for the two playground sets. And we will be bringing that to the board in the near future as well. So with the pre-K, that's a very time-sensitive project that we've been working on and another one that has been quite enjoyable, quite entertaining. We've been working on the classroom standard for our pre-K classrooms. Now I'll remind all of us that as part of the bond package, we included funds for a pre-K classroom standard. So every pre-K classroom in the district will have this new standard of furnishings and a bathroom. So our first order of business to prepare for the implementation of full-day pre-K that takes effect in August is to get the playground, or I'm sorry, the pre-K standard developed and begin to purchase those furnishings. We talk about the playground, or the pre-K standard, we're talking about. We talk about the playground, or the pre-K standard. We're talking about the tables, the seating, the playstations inside the pre-K classrooms. Those are the things that will make up that the FFNA, or furniture fixtures and equipment, standard for the pre-K classrooms. The bathrooms will be integrated into the renovation work that we're doing as we do work in each building. Our pre-K classrooms have been prioritized. Our principals have worked to make sure that we have pre-K in rooms that do have bathrooms in them. But the additional renovations of bathrooms will come as we do each school's renovation work. So Dr. Orsini has led the planning effort with a committee of teachers. Actually, we've had three different focus groups of teachers that have provided input, along with a group of principals have provided input on this. And so the things that we've worked around have been what you see here. Making sure that we include elements in that classroom that help promote cognition, problem-solving, help build social-emotional skills, develop speech and language skills, and then also help develop fine and gross motor skills. So we've been working with an architect firm, into architects. They've helped us, kind of guided us through this process, and they've been part of all the focus group meetings. They started the work by coming to us and bringing different pictures and samples of different spaces and other districts and other pre-K classroom settings that are considered current, very relevant type learning opportunities for kids. We then also brought in teachers that had already implemented full-day pre-K this last fall. And we brought those group, that group of teachers in, asked them what they liked and did not like about the furnishings in their rooms, what worked, what helped promote their instructional delivery in their rooms. Then we collected that information and kind of further refined the data and shared it out to a much larger group of pre-K teachers. We hosted that event at the Professional Development Center in, I think, the very end of February, first of March, before spring break, before we all, our lives changed with the COVID-19 virus. The architect then collected feedback from that large group and again, continued to refine the proposed design. Showed then a proposed design back to a smaller group of pre-K teachers who helped with curriculum writing for that grade level, took their input. And then finally, even just yesterday, we had a group of principals, elementary principals meet and give us feedback on the proposed design. And two of the elementary principals who were involved in that process were former pre-K teachers themselves. So they had a lot of very relevant input for us. So all of the effort was focused around the items I showed you on that previous slide and around making sure that we were providing appropriate spaces and tools and furnishings in our pre-K classrooms to help us meet our learning objectives for that group of youngsters. We will, our intention, I'll show you the design here in just a minute, is to begin phasing the installation of the furnishings. We will start first and foremost with the brand-new pre-K classrooms that we will be adding this fall to accommodate full-day pre-K. There are fifty-five new classrooms that we will be adding in the fall. So those will be the first ones that get the new standard, and then we'll begin phasing the other classrooms. We've anticipated it may take up to two years to get all of the classrooms outfitted with the new furnishings. But once we get started, we're going to move full steam ahead on that implementation. So what you see here is a list of things that the teachers told us were critical to their instruction of three- and four-year-olds. This also, these things also come informed by TEA standards for pre-K classrooms. So those things include a variety of table shapes and sizes, different types of seating. You'll see examples of that in just a minute. Very flexible storage, a lot of storage is very important. And storage that is on casters and can easily be moved around the room to address, to facilitate different projects that the teacher is implementing. Rugs and other things to actually create separate defined spaces within the classroom. And then projector and whiteboard, a teaching area with easel and desk. And then preferably, a making use of, to make use of every inch of space in that building or in that room, even a wall feature was important. So the design you see here, this is a layout of the final floor plan. This is, it's still marked draft, but this is the culmination of the input from all the different focus groups. And you see the different elements that we just talked about. The legend on the right aligns with the numbers on the individual spaces. You can see different types of tables. We have a square table, a round table, rectangular tables, all with chairs, small chairs for pre-K kids. Item two, at the bottom of the screen, is a horseshoe table. All of the teachers were just emphatic that the horseshoe table was an essential element for their instruction, where they can sit and be very close to the students they're instructing. Those are actually stools, or cushioned stools, that you see in front of that table. Item eight, I'm going to jump to that since it's next to the horseshoe table. That's a reading area. And again, an even shorter version of the little mushroom seats provided there, the cushions for kids to sit on in that space. The green space at the top on the left wall is a Lego wall. And that's a feature that will help with motor skills and also help promote STEM learning and math concepts. The table just beneath that is a sand and water table. Again, this was a feature that the teachers who have them now love and insist they have to continue to have. It's a very critical element to their instruction. The large rug was another thing, number four on the floor plan. This is a tool the teachers use for organizing kids, for group instruction, large group instruction. And by having the colored squares, everybody has a square. Everybody stays in their space, and it helps with classroom management. It helps create a system of order and routine for kids. There's a lot of storage in here. The items, item five, these are wall-mounted storage units in some cases. Then item number seven is a dramatic play area. There, that's a storage unit that has underneath it spaces for costumes for play. So every, we've tried to use every square inch of the room. All of the units you see here are on casters, so they can be moved very easily around the room to create different kinds of spaces that accommodate different learning activities. So there was actually an item on the consent agenda this evening on the over fifty thousand list to begin, to give us procurement authority to start buying these furnishings. And we want to make sure that we get our orders placed promptly so that we have furnishings here when school starts in August for those fifty-five new classrooms.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
I just want to take a moment, Vice President Hogg and others, to sincerely thank our pre-K teachers and Dr. Orsini and our principals to, that were involved in this effort. We got a lot of input. And I was able to join one of those meetings at the PDC. There was a lot of discussion about those rugs and things like that, all focused on serving our students exceptionally well. And I often say that this is one of those moments where implementing full-day prekinder is something we've waited for a long time. And now being able to do this, thanks to the voters, to the bond and the dedication of our staff. Pre-K registration opens on Monday. I'll throw that commercial in also. And this is what our design is for our standard classrooms across the district, so that our pre-K students are served really, really well. So just a quick thank you for all our pre-K teachers that were involved in this and all the pre-K teachers in general.
Okay, we've also been continuing planning work around administration offices. We had very purposefully, yes.
Hold on.
Ms. Powell, hold on.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I had a question. Could I ask a question?
Oh, please, yes.
Okay. I was real glad to see that the classroom equipment and furniture is movable. And that's real important, and I think it's going to be well-received by everyone who uses one of these rooms, one of these classrooms. I did have one question. I see that we're buying twenty-two chairs for each classroom. Is that correct?
We're buying chairs. Let me go back on this.
So that just brought to mind, what is our teacher-student ratio for these?
It's twenty-two to one. We're actually buying more than twenty-two chairs. We have twenty-two chairs. We've got the six stools here and four here. So I think we have seating for thirty, thirty actual seats in the classroom in addition to the two chairs that are the adult-sized chairs for the teacher and TA.
And Ms. Walton, that's a good question in terms of the pre-K. We also have a one-to-one TA for every pre-K. So it's a pre-K teacher and a pre-K TA for every pre-K classroom.
Right. So our ratio is twenty-two students to one and a half units of instruction, instructors or whatever. Is that basically? We're not going to put a kid on every one of those stools, are we, in addition, and bring it up to thirty?
No, 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 no.
Twenty-two to one.
There are thirty seats in there, but yeah.
Every classroom have a teacher and a teacher assistant.
Right.
Okay, thank you very much. Those were my questions.
All right. So we've also been working on administration facilities. With the 2014 bond program, we left the administration building to very last. And we have, we had a unique set of identified needs in that bond package and a different, unique set of identified needs in the 2019 bond package. So we're coupling those funds together. Likewise, we've been working on the Enterprise Center. So we've taken this as an opportunity to evaluate the possibility of consolidating our administration departments into fewer facilities to gain efficiencies and to allow for better collaboration and more effective work processes. And so what we've determined is that we can consolidate most of the administration departments into the administration, I mean, I'm sorry, into the Enterprise Center and the remaining departments into the JW Council Administration Building. And so we have a total of eleven point seven million dollars available to us for work at the Enterprise Center. And so we are working with the architect right now to finalize floor plans there and cost estimates there. We'll be bringing that information to you all soon. To give you a little more detail on what that consolidation will look like, at the Enterprise Center, we would house the curriculum department, special ed, world language, school improvement departments, human resource, communication and marketing, the finance departments, and central administration. Then at the JW Council Building, we would house the departments that have a lot of interaction with the community and try to keep them central there in the center part of town. The athletics department, parent and community engagement, the language testing center, test processing, health services, and then student services. We currently have some departments at the Hilldale Annex. Those departments would mostly move to the Enterprise Center. And the testing center then would move to JW Council. And then the Hilldale Annex, which is adjacent to our Arlington College and Career High School, will be held for potential future academic programming needs. And then the last building that we would look to would be Annex Four, which is about a block east of the administration building on Pioneer. There are, also, there are some departments in that building that would move either to Enterprise or to JW Council. And then that building will be used over the next several years as swing space as we begin our work to rebuild the service center. First, starting with the Transportation Department and the Security Department. And we house those administrative staffs in Annex Four. Once that work is complete, we may determine either to repurpose that building for another need, or we may determine that we can sell that property. So again, we're consolidating folks from four different buildings in the two going forward.
And Ms. Powell?
Yes.
If I could add, Vice President Hogg, just a quick comment on this. Go back a slide there, Cindy. So just for context, and I think it's important as these moments in time in our school district, if you see the Enterprise Center and the departments that will be consolidated in that one center, I think it's important to note that efficiency and service are the primary focus for that. But the other thing to note is that we in Arlington have not, for many, many years, and I would say most of our history probably, have not been able to have a consolidated area where we have these departments to collaborate and serve our schools and our students and our community. So this is a unique opportunity that, we're also doing some work parallel to this with these departments that Dr. Wertz will be leading to basically set up norms and protocols for service and efficiency. And an easier way of saying that is, when we're all together, because we haven't been all together in most recent history in Arlington, we've had a bunch of annexes, as you well know. So when we all come together, what does that mean for service to our schools and our campuses and our community? And what does it mean for our collaboration and our efficiency? And I think it's important to take the time prior to a move to have those discussions with these departments, for example, and the staff at all levels, secretaries and all levels, so that we don't miss the opportunity and we don't just consolidate without setting and reframing our norms and our delivery services for our campuses. So just like full-day pre-K is a big kind of moment in time for our district, a consolidation of central services and these departments is another one of those big moments in time that has been something that the district has desired to do, to provide efficiency and service to our campus for a long, long time. And we now have that opportunity. So I just wanted to note that as we move forward.
So that wraps up the 2019 facilities update. I'm going to touch on two other areas now, three other areas, and then we'll move to 2014. So with transportation, you see a list here of the equipment that was included in the bond program that we planned to purchase in year one of the bond program. Buses in-service fleet vehicles. You see that on buses, all of those are actually additions to our fleet. There are no replacements there. We replace our vehicles on a schedule of twelve-year rotation. There are none of our existing buses that are due. There are none of our existing buses that are due for replacement this year. So these are all additions. These, this will help us begin to implement or to implement the hazardous routes that we talked about during the bond planning work in the fall. And 12 new shuttle buses, those small buses that help us with transportation just within the city for small groups during the day. Those are very helpful. Also, the service fleet, these are our maintenance, security vehicles. The Suburbans are used again for student transportation. You see that we're planning to replace six vehicles, add six maintenance and security, and then also purchase two additional Suburbans. The band trailers, the board approved the, the pricing on band trailers at the last board meeting. The trailers have been ordered. The Fine Arts Department is working with the high school band directors to get their input on customizing the interiors of those trailers. That we, we had hoped that those would be here by the start of school. Those may be a tick delayed now with some of the closures that are taking place. I think it's going to be kind of close. It may be into the school year before we actually receive those. But the orders for all the buses and the service fleet vehicles have all been placed again along with the trailers themselves. In the fine arts area, these are the items that were planned for year one from the bond program. A lot of this work has, has progressed and POs have been cut for some of these things. In particular, the pottery wheels for the visual arts rooms. That, those, the pricing for that went to the board in March and we're about to cut purchase orders for that. The grand pianos, again, last board meeting, the board repricing on that. And we're in the process of issuing purchase orders for those. The Bowie band uniforms were actually on the board agenda for this evening. And so the board has just approved that. It will be cutting PO for those in the next day or so. On the drill team uniforms, the, see, the Arlington High Drill Team uniform, the design is complete and the PO is cut. The Martin Drill Team uniforms are in design process right now. So work is, is moving forward on all of these areas. That concludes the update on the 2019 bond work. I want to stop maybe there and see if there are any questions and then we'll move on into 2014 and to Eric White and Christopher Anderson with specifics on the Fine Arts and Athletics Centers.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Is there any questions from colleagues on the 2019 portion? That's Mr. Hogg.
Perfect. Just speak up on my screen because it's sharing. I can't see everyone's image right now. So Dr. Rice, I heard your name, your voice. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much, Vice President Hogg and Ms. Powell for the information. Certainly appreciate it. I guess the, the first and foremost question would be as far as on time, on budget with the pandemic situation, any, any thoughts as to how that's going to adjust our, our timetables at all at this point?
Okay, so we'll talk specifically, suggest that question, Fine Arts Center and Athletics Center in terms of the work still on schedule. We've heard that several of the manufacturers of materials that go inside the Fine Arts Center were a little bit delayed, but we don't think that that is going to change the substantial completion date on that facility. And again, on the Athletics Center, we still anticipate that that will be complete at the planned substantial completion date. We'll have kids swimming there by mid-August to start swim practice. We, we do think that the current circumstance, not just COVID-19, but also the recession that Texas is in because of oil pricing, will have an impact on our construction bids. Frankly, we think it will be a favorable impact to us for a little bit of time at least until things start to get back to normal. It's still somewhat fluid and there's not a lot of hard data yet. But the architects that we've been speaking with and cost estimators indicate that probably for the upcoming projects, we will begin to see the impact of that on our bid price. I don't see any delays at the moment on any of the projects that we're talking about, that we've just talked about here. Those are still very much in the early design stage for the new elementary schools in Crow, in food service, the gun project. You all approved the GMP on that. We, is, we have not had any indication that schedules are delayed on any of those projects.
Great. That's really good news. Hopefully that'll, that'll continue to be the, the situation. Obviously with a lot of our 19 projects, we're in the, the design phase. So the verdict will be out when we actually go for the bids and that type of thing. I definitely appreciate that. The, another question I had regarding pre-K. With the FFNE, I, I think that the, the design, the process has been great. And Dr. Cavassos probably knows what, what I'm going to ask here, but was curious, was there, or has there been talk about incorporating Montessori-type things? Or was that taken into consideration or other types of standards outside of what, what's out there for public education standards for the design of the room?
And not overtly calling out Montessori. We looked at different elements that are used in pre-K centers in some other schools. One of the things we had to keep in mind was that, you know, we've got approximately 900 square feet to 1,000 square feet, depending on which building you're in, in a pre-K classroom. And so the, I think the TEA standards call for a pre-K classroom to have six to seven distinct stations for learning with, with very distinct purposes in those rooms. And so the focus was more around the elements to help meet those different learning standards. And so it wasn't specifically called out for a Montessori approach.
Well, I'm, I'm hopeful that that'll still be a part of the conversation more in the, on the programmatic side of things. I think it, it can work within our, our design and our standard for sure. And I do appreciate the elements in there regarding the social, emotional, and problem-solving. And I assume embedded within that is things like conflict resolution. And that's kind of weeds and programmatic, but I, I do appreciate seeing those elements in there. So thank you for that. And then just a, a comment that I would have to Dr. Cavassos's point with the enterprise, the consolidation of all the administrative or most of the administrative functions. I, I think it cannot be understated that going into that with a certain expectation and with the outcome in mind of what the opportunity can actually be is, is essential. So I really appreciate what you had to say about that. It can't be understated enough that this is a completely new opportunity and it really is an opportunity to gain efficiencies and to continue to push the, the platform that this district has really been excellent at in, in recent years in setting a new standard of excellence. So looking forward to, to what's to come on that. I don't have any other questions at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Any other questions from colleagues regarding this? Awesome. Ms. Powell, let's move on.
Great. All right. So now then we do want to update you on the work taking place around the Fine Arts Center and Athletics Center that are funded through the 2014 bond program. So I've got several aerial shots here that were just taken in the last probably 10 to 14 days. And so you see here an image, the, the, the building in the lower right is the Fine Arts Center. The building in the top corner is the Athletics Center. And in that building, we have an auditorium, an arena, and a warm-up pool. In the Fine Arts Center, we have a concert hall, a small theater, a dance studio, an art gallery, and classroom space. This picture is actually inside the, the arena. So you very much can see that taking shape and moving forward. This is in the auditorium area, the, the competition pool. And we are installing a Murtha pool. So that is a, a system of stainless steel panels that will be installed around the pool. And that work is, is very well underway. This is a picture of the small theater, looking from the stage area out to the seating area, out to the, you can see the balcony. So that work has, has been able to progress very well despite some of the closures. And so we still anticipate, as I said a minute ago, that the auditorium will be ready for kids to begin swimming mid-August to start competition swim practice. And then the Fine Arts Center will follow several weeks later. And so the athletics department and the fine arts department have been working very hard around the programming for those two facilities. So at this point, I'm going to invite in Christopher Anderson. And he is going to give an overview of the program offerings that they're working on at the career, I'm sorry, at the Fine Arts Center. So I'm going to mute and I'm going to continue to run the PowerPoint.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Perfect. Sounds great.
Very good. Vice President Hogg, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to discuss the launch of the Center for Visual and Performing Arts. And I want to update you tonight on overview of offerings and focus on the classroom space. This fall, the center will feature course offerings in music, visual arts, dance, and instrument repair. The majority of our classes will be stacked, meaning that we can have multiple levels of students in the same classroom. This makes scheduling much more flexible for the campuses. Within the visual arts, we will feature IB Art and Art IV, which will also open expansion opportunities on the traditional campuses for high-demand Art I and Art II courses. We'll also be featuring an open studio offered after school that will help students prepare capstone projects and give them unprecedented access to equipment and supplies. Also, a late bus that runs at the very end of the day allows them to return to their campus if they desire. In our other offerings, we have piano courses. That's on the next slide. We have piano courses that'll be offered to the general student population. And music theory courses for our upper-level music students. Both of these courses are, or the sets of courses will be offered in the same stacked format as the visual arts courses. It just gives a lot, a lot of flexibility. The instrument repair program will now be able to really spread its wings and to run on all cylinders in two large AB blocks. And we'll also introduce the new Arlington ISD Dance Company, which will grow into an elite dance troupe that'll perform throughout the year. This will be comprised of auditioned dancers from all across the district, providing a level of dance instruction that we've never had the capacity to offer. And will allow us to build some additional capacity in dance instruction in other courses that'll be offered during the day. The center will function similarly to the CTC in regard to scheduling and busing considerations. The new schedule for the center was built utilizing lessons, lessons learned from the CTC, and it will mimic the transportation schedule. Special thanks to, to Ginger and her team for really helping us to, to, to see through the complications of that by the lessons that they've learned up there. She, she and her team did a great job helping us. Our overall daily schedule is offset from the CTC basically by one block. We're one block earlier than they are. That is in order to finish our day in time to get the majority of the performing arts students back to campuses for their after-school rehearsals. So for the performing arts, it was critical to us that we do not put pressure on our existing band, choir, and theater programs by having after-school courses in those specific areas. The visual arts and dance programs lend themselves naturally to the after-school meetings, such as the open studio. And since our drill teams primarily rehearse before school, it's natural to have our dance company rehearsals after school at the center. There are many opportunities for enrichments. Opportunities for groups of students to attend topic-based seminars for a few days or for a week in conjunction with their existing art courses will certainly set us apart. Additionally, we have our elementary explore program that'll allow kids firsthand access to this world-class facility. Another important piece is having kids see themselves in this facility from a very young age. Theater and instrumental masterclasses, gallery exhibitions, lectures, and even now adult classes in the evening are possible where they haven't been before. So this is a much anticipated project for all, of course. But I would leave you with the, the fact that I think the grandeur of this facility is going to pale in comparison to the grandeur of the student performances and art shows that are held within. Thanks for the opportunity to present this programming information. And if you have any questions, I can take those at this time.
Mr. Hogg?
Sorry, Ms. Walton, went on mute. Ms. Walton, go ahead.
May, may I ask a, a quick question or two?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Ms. Walton.
Okay. Dr. Anderson, this is so exciting. There's more here than, it just grows and grows. It's so exciting. I did have one just kind of technical question. And that is these, the open studio after school, who will be supervising those students?
Well, first of all, Lynn Nguyen has been in charge of, of building this program. And he's done an excellent job of working out how the teachers on staff will be able to, to, to be in charge of that. We're, we're still working on the final details of what that might look like. But we want to balance the offering of classes with that after-school time. And a, a, a teacher would be in the room to help the students with their, with their projects through that open studio.
Okay, thank you. And I think it was clear that most of the kids will be getting back to campus before 3:00 to be able to do the, some after-school activities on, on their campuses. So the after-school, you may not know the answer to this. How, how long will that after-school period for those open studio times are you thinking about?
Well, that's a good question. I think a lot of it depends on whether the students are taking a course during the last block of the day as to whether they can just continue on. We do have some finalization that we have to do with the transportation schedule. There are a couple of creative things that we, that we can still do to get kids there at, at different times, right at the end of the school day. We do still have some details to work out to answer that particular question. But that is a discussion that we're having right now about how much opportunity, how much time. And then just logistically making sure that we can manage all of this, make sure we manage the, the facility itself, care for the equipment, care for the assets that we have, and provide as much opportunity for the kids as possible without, without affecting or damaging other things that they might, they might do. So there are a lot of pieces in this conversation that we're talking about. So there are a lot of pieces in this conversation that we're talking about right now.
Okay, well, I'm glad that you're getting all this worked out. I think it's going to be wonderful. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Ms. Fowler, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Dr. Anderson, did I understand correctly that for the new AISD dance team, which is so, so exciting, can students still be in drill team and also in, on the dance team?
Yes, our dance teachers were very clear about wanting to provide additional opportunities. But we are, we are clearly wanting to, to focus on a really high-quality dance that moves beyond just the, just drill, drill team, which is, you know, not lesser than, but it is one aspect of dance.
Sure.
So we're wanting to make sure that we have these opportunities available to, to everyone. We anticipate that a number of, of really high-quality dancers are on those drill teams. And what we're after, one of our guiding principles is to keep kids from having to make choices unless they absolutely have to. We're just wanting to open up as many opportunities for everybody as possible.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Great news.
Yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Doctor, yeah, Dr. Raj.
Thank you, Vice President Hogg. Dr. Anderson, thank you very much. There's so much excitement and anticipation with what this will be. Such tremendous opportunities that our, our community will benefit from, through our students. So one, one simple question, from the administrator's standpoint, are you fully staffed? Or do you still have key positions open?
The, the director for the center has been hired, actually an incredible hire. I'm excited to introduce him to the, to the rest of you. We are in the process of hiring the dean of instruction right now and, and believe that by May 1st, we'll have that position completely onboard. And we're about to post the teaching positions also. So we're right at the front end of the, of the hiring for the classroom side of this.
Okay, very good. And I, I would hope, I guess, assume that with the pandemic that you, you are still pretty much on track just via Zoom versus face-to-face, correct?
That's, that's correct.
Good, 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 good. Well, we, we, we are so excited, can't wait for the day that we're able to get in there. Maybe hard hat tour, maybe after everything's done, just depends on when we're all allowed to be together again. Thank you so much for your work and, and explaining all this. Very excited for the opportunities that this will afford so many students in our district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. I don't see any other hands. Thank you, Mr. Anderson and Ms. Fowler. I think we're, we're moving to you or Mr. White. I'm not sure which.
At, at this point, we'll invite in Eric White. And he will give us some information about programming around the Athletics Center.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes, we can, we can. Sorry, please go ahead.
I'm trying to get where you can see me. I'll just talk through it. I'm, I'm, I'm still working on my Zoom proficiency here. But as long as you can hear me, it's all good. Nobody needs to see me anyway. Good evening, Vice President Hogg and Dr. Cavassos and board. This is an exciting time. And I'm excited because this is a lot of social interaction that you wouldn't normally get. There's a whole lot of people in here and this is, I'm excited about that. So I'll bring up here, as Cindy goes through this, we've got, you know, the auditorium and the arena both. And the auditorium programming is, there's, there's several different layers to that. Obviously, our high school swimming program is, is going to move there. We've currently been, it'll get in this a little bit later, with practice and competition. We have, we're working on developing an elementary water safety program and the AISD Swim Club. So as getting into the next level of the high school swim program, there we go, you will see that, and this is, this is temporary. We're still working with our high school. We have hired Suzanne Dangelmeyer as our aquatics coordinator. She was previously the head coach at Arlington High. And she is going to run the auditorium as far as the aquatics program. But as you see the slide in front of you, this is kind of a layout of what the high school swim and dive program will look like on a daily basis. This is still, as, as we get into this, it's, it's a work, work in progress. But we'll have varsity swimming, JV swimming, all teams. The, the biggest probably huge benefit that I see to this, we have been practicing all six teams in 14 lanes. And this facility is going to provide 23 lanes, which is such a huge step up to make us more competitive, to provide more opportunity for kids. And we have not really, we, we managed to, on some outlier labels, to compete, compete in diving. But we, it's been a hard place. We're going to have diving in this auditorium. So our diving team and offering that opportunity for kids is, is going to be greater than what it was before. There is opportunities to bid on hosting UL district events, regional events and things like that to bring competitions here. And so the, the high school program is going to be just enhanced with what we're offering. The thing that we're going to be able to add that I think is a really cool element to this auditorium is a water safety program for our elementary students. These are really going to be offered on a level of a, it almost serves as a field trip basis. We'll bring, and this is a program that we're still designing. Coach Danglemeyer is working on, on building this. And we're working together, we're researching some other districts around us to figure out how that's going to work. I'm sorry if y'all hear background noise. I've got dogs and I'm trying to manage that. But there's a classroom element, but really what this is going to involve is teaching kids how to manage water safety, how to be safe around the water. There's going to be a swim evaluation involved in that. So we can let the parents know the readiness of their child as far as their ability to swim. And then along with that, it will help promote our programs. We can say, hey, we're going to have swim lessons. There's different things involved with that. And just the ability to make, educate kids at, at an early age, that, that's a great step for us. That program's in design. But we feel like we can really improve the education of our students at that level of a third. And right now, we're settled on third grade and they'll come over and do it. It's about a three-hour course, classroom and water involved and readiness for that. So that's one element that's also there with that. The next element that we go to is, is creating a swim club that Arlington ISD will own and operate. This club starts at all different levels. It will promote students in the Arlington area. We'll accept students outside the Arlington area. That will, you think swim club, it is a competitive club. But we'll also, we take kids at different levels and that will promote our swim programs. That will get kids interested at an early age and bring them in so that as we're not trying to get kids starting in the ninth grade and teach them, you know, to be competitive swimmers. We get them early. And by Arlington ISD owning this, we have flex, we can meet the needs of students of all different levels. We, we have flexible rate plans. We, we can do things to meet kids of levels of all level that can really reach out instead of not bringing it in-house. We can do lifeguard training. We have swim lessons within that club. It can reach, it serves a lot of different purposes. But with us being in control of it, we get to set the parameters. We get to control our facility and we really get to serve the students and community. This, this club is really more about the community of Arlington and reaching them with an aquatics program that can reach all different levels. Future things we can think about, junior high swimming, starting kids in seventh and eighth grade. Summer swim camps, partnering, this, this facility will partner with the city of Arlington and what they can do. Bringing meets in from the outside with Arlington Sports Commission. I mean, this facility, as you've seen from the pictures, is fantastic. It's a large facility. It, it will host at a very high competitive level swimming. But it, it's a really good opportunity for us going forward. Moving on from that, the, the arena portion of that, of course, it is set up for volleyball, basketball, wrestling. And honestly, we've looked at some banquet opportunities on the floor of that space, hosting athletic banquets. The Hall of Honor have reached out to us to create an opportunity in that arena that is so, it's, it's not a gym. It's a, it's a very fine, high-level arena that we can do lots of things in. Of course, high school basketball games, junior high games. We will not going to limit this to, you know, specific things. We're going to try to keep it full. I've already had many emails and opportunities from, from wrestling to volleyball to basketball to, they want to host tournaments. UL, it would become a very popular venue for UL hosting playoffs and bringing people to our community and town. Wrestling, it's, it's going to prevent, have a venue that's going to allow us outside of a high school gymnasium to be very unique in what we can do with wrestling. And those, that's, that's a huge group from our high school kids to our junior high kids to even bidding on regional meets and bringing those UL things in. So that's another huge opportunity for us going forward as far as that arena. So I think that's kind of an overall summary. I could talk for a long time and I get pretty excited when I think about this. So I think Cindy's been hitting forward, so I don't, I don't talk too long. But it's, it's really exciting. I think this venue is fantastic. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity from the, developing our swim program to the swim lessons, to the elementary program, to all the athletic events, events in the arena. So I'm, I could host any questions that you have on that. But like I said, I'll, I'll stop talking right now because I can go and go.
Thank you, Mr. White. And Ms. Fowler, let me ask a question real quick just to start us off. Mr. White, I think, I think the swim program for third graders or whatever the term is, a non-negotiable. That is a required, it is something when we built this thing, it's not just about creating fast swimmers. This is about safety of young men and women, young children and, and the swimming. So I would ask you on that, I think we also, I want to make sure we're also working with our Arlington Fire Department. Because I know the fire department's pretty interested if they can reduce the amount of drownings that occur every single year. That is a huge asset to this entire community as a whole. And so I'd ask, you know, when we do that evaluation, and then, you know, I know we had some grandiose dreams when we started of saying, you know, kids are going to come in and get swim lessons and, you know, get the basics for those that don't know how to swim. You know, what happens when you evaluate a kid and we find out they don't know how to swim? How are we, how are we enabling them from a safety standpoint? They, to empower them and their families to be able to get those swim lessons when, when they may not be able to afford normal swim lessons that a lot of kids are, are taking?
So I think that's the great thing about owning our own AISD Swim Club, is what you call it. It sounds like a swim club, but the, the ability of what we own, every time a kid comes in, and, and we're still working on it, and forgive me, as this is in process, because we're looking at several different districts' models. But we're going to send home information. Basically, you get a evaluation of your kid is proficient, your kid needs this, your kid needs that. And, but then that's going to go home. But we have the ability as a district now, when we own our own club, to look at the rates. If you, if, depending on what your socioeconomic status is, we could say, hey, we're going to offer swim lessons. And like I said, it will vary on, because it's ours, we can control that. And it doesn't have to be you have to pay this, you have to pay that. And I can't, we're not to the point of what those details look like and sort of. But that's the beauty of this is, is Arlington ISD can control that. And we work closely with the drowning prevention, there's a drowning prevention board and all that other, and allowing that training process and develop that within us. We have that ability to set that up so that it does not become a financial burden to kids that we need to make safe. And that's a, that's the beauty of us being in control is, is it's up to us. And if it wants to be free, depending on the deal or whatever the reduced rates are, or providing opportunities. But we're going to get, hopefully, the plan is to get every third grader across Arlington ISD there, teach them about water safety, evaluate them on their water level and let parents know where they stand and then present the opportunities they have to improve that. Or maybe they just want to be, maybe they love swimming and want to be involved. And that's their avenue to be connected through, you know, outside sports, and this shows away. So I think it just opens up a big, a big door.
Perfect. I know we're developing, I know we're, I hear background. Mr. White, I know we're developing that program. I appreciate it. So I don't expect all the answers. The only thing I, I saw some mention of rentals to other UL meets, I would hope. And as we discussed this, listen, a auditorium is not an, not an inexpensive facility to run. It is a very costly facility. There is a lot of extra costs that other facilities don't have. When we looked at this, a neighboring district received revenue of about $700,000 a year in rentals. So I'd hope we're, and, and maybe it's not so much a question, but just make sure and encouragement that we're working with our Convention and Visitors Bureau and their sports marketing department to be renting this location out when we are not utilizing it. And making sure when we schedule it, while the priority one is always going to be our district, we do need to schedule around so that, to supplement some of this cost. Because it is, is a very expensive facility to run. So I know Southern Division Three, Division Two swim, national meets and any other major qualification meets that can bring lots of folks in to our facility for rental and also fill some hotel occupancy in our city and our sales tax, the whole. So I would just hope that that is on the full consideration and we're deeply entrenched with working with Convention and Visitors Bureau.
I'll speak to that briefly and maybe somebody else does it before. But yes, I, I agree that, you know, we're going to meet the, the needs of our kids. But with the, the, the facility we're building, it's going to be in high demand. And we will work with, you know, obviously Kelly Horn and figuring out what the operational costs are. And the demand that's going to come with that is, is going to be high. And so I think, I, I don't, I feel like you're right. I think that we can run it. It'll take a little time to build that, but I think it'll, I think that will, the demand that will be very strong. And we'll just, I'll, I'll work with the people involved to understand that we know that, that that facility needs to be full and running and operational.
Perfect. Appreciate that. Ms. Fowler, I know you had a question. Sorry, go ahead, Dr. C.
I was just going to say, Vice President Hogg, that as, as just a reminder, the board knows this, but a reminder that we do have a partnership agreement with the city to, for them to use the smaller pool for recreation and things like that. And we also have an agreement with Convention and Visitors Bureau as they provided a small amount, relatively speaking. It was a large amount, but a small relative to the project, of funding as well to make sure it met certain standards so that we could activate it for competitions and things like that. So thank them ahead of time, both the city and the CVB. But yeah, that's a focus to make sure we're good partners, but also that we activate because it is, it is costly to, to operate.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. C. Ms. Fowler, I know you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hogg. Mr. White, I see that the arena is going to be used for volleyball and basketball and wrestling. Any thoughts to letting our gymnastic program also be involved?
You know, I think when, when you look at that, I think we've probably explored every avenue that we can. As far as when you have a facility that's nice and used, whether it's gymnastics or, that's why we brought up banquets. I mean, I think you exhaust every effort as to Vice President Hogg's point, when we have the opportunity, even within AISD or without, outside of AISD, that we maximize. These are beautiful facilities and they're, they are five-star. And we need to make sure we are maximizing every opportunity that we have with that.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Ms. Walton, I think you had a question. If I saw your hand going up, is that right, Ms. Walton, or yes or no? I, I see a head shake. No, you're on mute. So I'm going to take that as a no.
Right. No, I don't have any questions. Thank you. It's exciting. And I, I just, I'm real thrilled that this is going so well.
I see you, I see you, Mr. Will, Mr. Will Banks, go right ahead. David?
There you go. Yeah, I had to find the unmute, unmute button. Mr. White, it looks like a fabulous facility. It sounds like we made an excellent hire in terms of the director. I know Suzanne Danglemeyer has the experience of running a club with Mars, with her husband. And I think has the experience. I know a lot of people in the swim community would applaud that choice. So having said that, I know her and her husband are both involved with Mars. I, I assume we've worked out any potential conflicts between her running this club and those other clubs. her running this club and those other clubs. But is there anything you can say about that?
What I would say about that is yes. We have worked out any, anything that goes towards that. And I believe that there will, there will be no conflicts, that the promotion of Arlington ISD and the club that we established there will be the number one priority for her and everybody involved.
Okay. And, you know, Mr. Hogg and a few others, you know, talked about the potential to rent this out. And you even mentioned that we have a nascent diving interest in the district. And now we'll have the ability to provide diving. I know for most of the competitions that are gonna rent this out, some of the upper levels, they're pretty, I, I don't know too much about swimming, but I know, know there's specific requirements in terms of diving platforms and, and sizes. What are the platform sizes in this facility going to be? And are they adequate to? Are there any kind of competitions they're not gonna be appropriate for because they're not the proper size?
For the high school, we don't have platforms, obviously, but we have a one meter and a three meter, which for NCAA and UL meets all competition. I mean, we, we don't have the, when you go to the Olympics and you see the platform diving, things like that. But we do have two one-meter and two three-meter boards, which is what it takes for UL competition. And I, I will say that's what, I don't believe there's NCAA, majority of the NCAA competitions that I've seen, I don't think have the platform piece they made. But for UL competitions, we have met every need possible and for majority of the clubs, because it's the one meter and three meter.
And Mr. Will, Mr. Willbanks, when we designed that and with the original discussions, that was a big discussion point. We actually went beyond even what we had to have for just high school diving. But that was a, a big discussion point.
I think that's all my questions. It's, uh, looks great. I can't wait. I'm disappointed that we missed our tour of both those facilities. But hopefully those can be rescheduled as soon as we're open back up.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Willbanks. Mr. White or Dr. Gavasos, or let me ask you a question. With the amount of students that'll be going in and out of these facilities, will we have a, a nurse or a trainer or what? I know we've got facilities being run, but what about, you know, especially the athletic facility for the safety of the students that are, that are being over there? What, what's the plans for that?
Eric, do you wanna take that?
Well, we have, that, that, that's still in discussion right now as far as we go towards personnel. We're still finalizing that. You know, with many of our sports like that practice off-campus, between, whether it's golf or, or tennis, or sometimes when they go away, there's, there's training, there's athletic trainers on each campus where they can get daily care. Our coaches are all bait, are all trained on the first aid and safety of, of those students. We had, there has been some discussion based on whether, with the nursing and I, I don't, I can't speak to the nursing of the whole facility. But there is some discussion towards the athletic training ability at that, at that facility itself. But there are two trainers at every high school as far as day-to-day care and how we manage that.
And, and Vice President Hogg, what I would add is that the, a little more context, the swim coaches, that this will be their homeschool, if you will. So this is, this is where they'll be housed. We have had discussion about health services for both facilities. So we may be in a situation where we're sharing health services for both facilities. And that's, that's more of the discussion versus just for this facility.
Okay, that's perfect. Thank you. I, I don't see any other questions. As long as that athletic facility is kicked off with Dr. Gavasos going off the high dive, I think we're all in a, I think we're all in great, we're all in great shape.
Synchronized swimming, remember.
I, I've got, I've got a niece who's a big synchronized swimmer. I've, I've said it more me than I'd like to. I've, I've been overly impressed with what those young ladies do in synchronized swimming. So, so Ms. Ms. Powell, I think we're near the end. I'll, I'll give it to you to finish up.
Great. Thank you very much. So this, this is, you're right, we are at the end here. We'll take any other questions you have. I will say that, you know, we talked about the work that, that is already well underway. We also have had, just this week, a, our first meeting to begin planning the stadium, the new competition stadium. That was a very preliminary meeting. Now begin to insert athletic coordinators and coaches from throughout the district to give input on that as well. The Barry and Thornton Elementary Replacements, that work is going to begin in the next couple of weeks with separate planning processes with architects for those two facilities. Then in the fall, we will do boundary work to set new boundaries for eight schools in the East Arlington area. So and, and, and so we will continue to come back to you and update you on this work. This is something that has been a, a pretty easy thing, I think, for us to engage in different meetings, Zoom meetings and what have you to continue our work in this area. We're again continuing to bid different elements of furniture and fixtures and about to begin purchasing technology equipments. All these things are, are moving forward. And I, I think we all feel pretty confident that things are still very much on schedule for these projects. So we appreciate the opportunity to visit with you this evening and we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Perfect. I don't see any inklings of faces looking for questions. I think we got most of them out. I would say I think we're ready to move on unless there's something else. Thank you all. Thanks for that. Thanks for all the work on the bond. I know it's, uh, still a, a major task. And as we know, business still has to continue with all the changes that are occurring constantly for us right now. Next up on our agenda item, if I find it under my agenda item. I know off the top of my head, next up on the agenda item is Congress report for Board of Trustees Continuing Education Credit. As a Board of Trustees, we have to make constant training. As a new trustee, you have to do more and complete. You have to also have to complete the Meetings Act. And as ongoing trustees, after the first year, we still have requirements to meet all of our continuing education, education credit hours. With that, I was, I'm pleased to report, Mr. Willbanks completed all of his first-year training, completion on that. And all board members have completed all their training throughout the entire year with, I have to give special credit to our own Dr. Raish for being the leader in the most hours completed for training this year. Way to go, Dr. Raish. I know you're a trainer by nature, so obviously you like giving trainer to pharmacist and receiving board training and all the rest. So I appreciate all of my colleagues for all the work that all seven of us have done to complete. And Dr. Gavasos, you go through many of those hours with us at the same time. So we appreciate that. And, and while sometimes it's tedious, I do believe it makes us all better board members as a whole. So I congratulate this group for completing and continuing all this, all the work of all the hours of trustees that Ms. Benjamin's provided to exceed all of our required training hours. And we've all provided literature covering the frameworks, school development by the Board of Education.
Hey, Mr. Hogg, are you sure I didn't fail anything?
Uh, for another time. No, Ms. Willbanks, I don't think you failed anything about this time. So thank you to all my colleagues. Now we move on to open forum for agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any items, requesters registered to trust the board?
No, sir. No registered requesters.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. Mrs. Secretary, do we have any items to consider tonight?
Sorry about that. Yeah, I was on mute. I'm sorry. No, sir. We do not seem to have any items to, from the secretary.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Walton. Thank you to all my colleagues. Thank you to all the staff. It's, I know there's a million things going on and adding another, creating online meetings is always another task. I think all the districts adapted very well. I saw my five, my five-year-old go through some meetings and even my preschooler three-year-old had a Zoom meeting today, which is a whole different story to follow on that. So I appreciate all the staff and, and at this time, I just think all of our staff and all of our teachers and, and all of our employees, thank you for all the work. It is outside the norm. It is unprecedented. And I ask all the staff to have patience. And then as parents, as we moved into phase three, I know many of us communicate with me, parents, and we all say, take a deep breath. We're gonna get you. We're gonna go through the progress, online learning. And if you think about it, all this has been created within a month. It's pretty amazing to think what staff can do in a month. The hard part is now, we may never accept that things can't be done really fast ever again, Dr. Gavasos. But we also know the unprecedented times, the amount of extra hours that staff has put into this and is not, it is not going unnoticed. One, one, the community notices, the board notices, and we're very proud of all this staff. So I appreciate all the hard work, all the communication that's gone out to this district and this community during a time when nothing's normal is what we've been doing in the past. So with that, it is 6:57 and we will adjourn. Thank you all.